I think we're ready to go, Catherine and Leo. We'll start here. This is the regular board meeting, July 15, 2024, 5:00 PM. Harlan Community School District. And so we have Hazelton Albersen on finance. We've got Policy Blatt, Art Field Reichel. A is call a meeting to order and determine we have a forum. So we have a corner, I believe, Catherine. And so we'll call the meeting to order and note that this is a public forum. And did we have any speakers tonight? Anyone that volunteered? It's kind of sparse around the audience tonight. So I guess we'll have to do it alone, huh? Okay, so the next item is, item C is to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that or would someone like to make the motion? So Greg, you've got Roger second. Catherine, your fingers are nimble tonight. All those favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, next we have discussion items and we'll turn it over to Dr. Barnett.
Okay, I just have three real quick things. Anna Gill was selected as the Masonic Teacher of the Year for the whole state of Iowa. So she was very excited and it's kind of an honor. It is an honor. She will be recognized in Cedar Rapids in September. So she's, she does an excellent job and they nominated her in-
Masonic what?
Masonic Lodge. Masonic Teacher of the Year for the state of Iowa.
Teacher of the Year.
Teacher of the Year. Masons. And then-
That's cool.
It's very, yeah. We also had Justine Holloway was selected by her peers by, from the Iowa Association of Agriculture Educators as the Southwest Iowa District Vice President. So that's another leadership piece for her. She does a lot for FFA. So that's good. And then Corey Wilgus and Emerson Reichel were selected to serve on the Iowa Communications Network State Youth Broadband Advisory Council. So that's, that's a big deal. So they're on an advisory board for communications. And I think Kylie, Kylie Com has done a lot to help all of our, with the social media side of things and to teach them, to get them out into the community and into the state to learn lots of new things. So that's exciting. So they'll represent us. And if you guys don't, if you remember, our IJAC president, state president is from Harlan as well.
Yeah, what's his name?
Isaac. I, no. It is, I should have said it.
I can't remember. I remember it. It looks like-
I can see him.
It was at the top.
I can picture him too. With the hat.
Yeah.
I'll think of it in a second here. And Emerson also was accepted into the code.org ambassador program and I think that's nationwide. So that's another thing that she applied for. So very, very good. Yeah, so lots of good-
Zeke.
Zeke. Yep.
Thank you for rallying that out.
Thank you, Catherine. So that's just all I got for now. And principals are all at different places. There's state baseball tonight, so a lot of them are getting ready for that.
Just got a text, Brett Sears got selected in the seventh round by the Braves.
Oh, wow. They thought it was going to be-
His dad might have been shopping at my store today on celebration. I don't want to accusing of anything.
Yeah, dispossess. And that's a day early. They thought it was going to be on Tuesday.
That's pretty impressive.
So that's good. Very cool.
Seventh round of the Braves. Isn't that how it works?
Yep, it's made of braids.
That's great. Okay.
Do you have, anything on the facility? You want to mention the tour and all that?
Facility, yeah, we, we had a tour. We, we had several board members go through the tour of both sides. The walls are going up. It's very exciting. We just, there's, we just, Catherine and I were in there today and they actually did put the temporary wall up for the high school. So, and they're getting ready to get concrete down, out for the trailers. Air conditioning and everything is working in the trailers well. Like I talked to the-
The plumbing is left, the cement is left, and then there's just checklist stuff.
Yeah, so those are getting, those are getting-
Well, we got bathrooms in the-
There are bathrooms in the classrooms.
In the classroom.
Which will be nice for teachers.
Uh-huh.
They'll probably want that.
Have we looked at the action items? They're putting toilets in it, right? Or making yourself there hooked up?
Yeah, they'll be hooked up. Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, they're excited about that.
I did ask Travis to last week about where we are timeline, which is about a week ahead over there. And he says some of the contractors actually, like the electrical, he said, they're, they're waiting for work.
For the next-
And it works out kind of nice because they'll come over here and they go back over there. So they're, they're, and he said the mechanical is moving real well. They did put the rooftop air handlers, I think, on today.
They had the crane there today. Yeah, it was pretty cool.
Big thing. I was amazed when I walked through the high school, everything's demoed. And to look up, I mean, this high school is built, I mean, it's poured concrete deck. I mean, the, those tees are, it's quite a structure. I never, I thought it was just a bar joist and-
There's a reason we remodeled this and built it up.
Yeah, it's quite a building. Good bones.
Good bones. And there's several change orders on our agenda today. So we'll talk more about facilities when we get to that.
Okay, we're ready to move on to action items?
I think so.
Okay, let's see, action items. And I might mention that I think Superintendent Barnett did a wonderful job in the Friday, what do you call it, emails? Because it really helped understanding some of the items here. We, we actually have, what, 17 items to look over, but it really helps when you have a little bit of background on each one to make a decision. So I really appreciated that. So number one, we have the personnel report, Catherine. Do you want to tell us about that?
Yeah. We are still looking for one special education teacher and that's in the middle school. If you see the new hires, we are, Jennifer right there, we're going to hire her as a long-term substitute teacher for our special education classroom in the high school. She's been a para in the high school for, well, one or two years now. But she has a bachelor's degree in teaching. She just never did her student teaching. So our solution, and she's, she's, she's got to go back to school and, and get some of that extra education. But we're going to get her in there teaching. She's got a mentor. We have to have a teacher of record.
Her special ed. On? Tanya Brook is going to do that.
So there's one of our, our creative solutions to our future shortage.
So what's a long-term substitute mean? Does that mean that they'll work every day?
Mm-hmm. She'll be the teacher in there every single day. We just need a special permission from the BOEE, which we will get due to her schooling and the fact that it's so hard to find special education teachers right now. So-
She's already signed in, up in the classes and taking them. So she's willing.
Yes, and so that's kind of exciting. And then just a few classified resignation, or certified, classified resignation. We did receive a resignation from Julie DeValle, our math teacher. She's very, very sad to resign her position, but she needs to kind of take care of herself and her health right now. So she gave us her resignation last week. And we're sorry to see her go, but she's been a wonderful teacher for her district for a very, very long time. So nothing else really-
We're finally fully staffed in the custodial.
Yeah, yeah.
For the first time in a long time.
Yeah. Christian Keckel joined our elementary custodian team.
So she resigned last week, but we don't have anybody down at the-
So what happened was, we kind of foresaw, foresaw this happening. And we had, we hired-
Delaney.
Delaney Schmitz.
Oh, okay.
So.
She, she was originally hired for the STEM position that we had at the middle school. And then the more that we kept understanding Julie's situation, we, we actually asked her if she'd be interested in the math position because she has a math degree.
Okay.
So we moved her. And then once we knew a little bit more that the STEM position was going to be open, then we opened that up. And that's where we hired Noah-
Noel Hazy.
Hazy.
So what math, what math?
She teaches freshman.
Okay.
Lower level.
Yeah, the vacancies are low, aren't they? There's always-
That's one, special ed teacher and a few paras, if anyone's interested.
At these times, I imagine that's been pretty good.
Yes. Better than some.
That might be a little reflection of our administration, I think. So kudos to you guys.
Thanks.
That was good.
Nothing else?
Could we have a motion to approve the personnel report?
I'll make a motion.
So moved by Jen.
Second.
Second by Roger. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Next we have our item two, approval of issuance to baiting change order one that kind of dovetails in, although the two separate motions to number three, approval of issuance to REW change order two.
It's very confused. Okay, so just as a reminder, issuance one was the auditorium and the sprinklers. Issuements two is actually the remodel of the high school and it's in two phases. So phase one goes from now until December, hopefully. And then January to the beginning of next school year, September, or August, August, not September, 2025. And then issuance three is the new elementary school. So that just, so there's, when we do the change orders, it's kind of a little bit confusing sometimes when it comes down to it. So the, the, actually, item number two and number three are related to taking out the asbestos in the high school. And what happened was the contractor, Shai Hatterley, hired someone to take it out and and the demolition, when the demolition came, they didn't scrape up the carpet glue. And they said they didn't have to. So De novo went to that for us, which is part of their job, and said, no, it's in your contract, you have to. And they ended up hiring baiting to do it, which was already on site. So the first one is the baiting change order, to pay baiting to do it. The second one is to take it out of, that REW change is to take it out of their contract and put it into baiting. So it's basically a wash.
Moving money from one entity to another.
So basically it was one entity ate it.
Yeah, yep. And they have been, and it's not a knock on REW, honestly. They were, they were really, really good at the demolition side of things and were, actually did it quicker than we thought too. So it was just this one piece they missed. Any questions on that?
We'll take a motion on item two, approval of issuance to baiting change order number one. So moved by Greg.
I'll second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. So the next one dovetails a little bit there is the approval of issuance number two, REW change order number two. Unless there's any discussion, we'll look for a motion.
All moved.
So moved by Roger and second by Greg. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next we'll move into item number six, the approval of issuance one, initial abatement contract change order one R. And this is in the amount of $26,000. And I understand, it says on here it's a-
We were on four, we were on four.
Oh, four, I jumped ahead. Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, approval of issuance number three, Nelson Company Change Order number one. This one is for a minus of $1,915 and then a plus of $566 for two fixtures. I think the minus of 1915 is for some, we're taking out certain type of lock and doing another type.
Yes, so Jeremy, who are our technology guru, found a better device for us, technology-wise, to get in and out of the doors and it's safer and it's not going to be the wild, blah, blah, less, as they say. So that's, that's what this is. Plus then they threw in two can lights that weren't on there just to make one change order, right? You got something else? Yeah.
Yeah, the, the security and then where the two schools met, they, they wanted a couple extra can lights there just for better light.
Questions or should we take a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Greg. So goodbye Jen, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Man, I jumped from three to six. Wow. Okay, well, we'll go back to, is this five?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was excited, I thought you were letting me out early. Okay, so now we're back to five. Approval of issuance number three, baiting change order number three. This one might have a little discussion on. We thought about tabling it, but we thought it might be fine to talk about it at least.
So this one, there's a retaining wall on the sidewalk adjacent to the parking lot in the primary. And so the retaining wall goes there. And based on code, you do not have to have a fence. So the architects did not put a fence in. We knew that. So Brian, Mike Dare and Jeff Moser met and felt that we needed a fence there just for safety reasons because there's quite a drop, six to eight foot drop. So they chose a fence and then baiting, asked baiting if they would be interested in-
We met with, we moved after one day of construction meeting. That's when we kind of talked it through. And then after that, they put it out. That's what-
So that's what they, so what they, there's several different types of fencing. There's, and Mike Dare wanted something that's kind of in the middle so that he doesn't have to repaint it or take care of it as much, something that's a little more durable. The fence is-
Low maintenance.
Low maintenance, there we go. This would be paid on Pepple. There's plenty of money in Pepple. One of the questions that came up is do we have to take something else away from Pepple that we were going to do in order to do this? And the answer is no.
We have, one, we, we always keep reserves of Pepple because obviously you never know what's going to happen. You don't want to be sitting there with a dry well. But we actually, I was telling Jenny earlier that we, Pepple had a really good year last year. We've done some preventative, preventative stuff, which really helped a lot to, this last year. The year before, Mike went out and kind of really hit it hard and say, okay, let's start getting ahead of stuff. And you obviously paid dividends. So we had, calling a good year in Pepple. We, we didn't have to even lose all the funds out there, which was kind of nice. So yeah, it's our-
I would just say kudos to Mike for that too and De novo, because we had to do all kinds of upfront work, even before we hired De novo. We did upfront work on just an assessment of everything. So we just, we got a better picture of what we need and what we don't need and moving forward, what we might need.
And the Pepple funds are, again, Pepple plant equipment, but it's not used for like computers or like these screens or anything like that.
It can be, Roger.
Okay.
It's like, I know we need more screens. Yeah, typically, typically speaking, what we've used, and this could be a gamut and I'm not going to hit everything. We use it for transportation equipment, for buses, for cars, for vans. That's on the transportation side. On this side, the, the maintenance side, you're going to use it for your roofs. You're going to use it for, unless you're talking huge things, your roof, your air conditioner, your actuators. One of the examples would be the thing that's blowing actually down on you, the, the, those units that we put in. That's stuff you're going to use it for on that. It can be used for tech, for, for, for technology. What they've done, and they've done this probably for over 10 years, is there's a amount set aside right off the top that we do use for tech. But we, that, we, we lock it at that. It's not, okay, if you need, if you don't need. And they know that ahead of time. We've actually been really fortunate, our tech people have always, this is your budget will live within it.
So we also, with the Chromebooks, are going to save some money on that, on that round too.
And the other thing we're doing with, the one thing we're doing with Pepple this year is we're starting, they wanted to replace the cooling tower out there as part of their renovations. Well, it's not really till the end of its life yet. So what we're doing this year is we're starting a sinking fund. And we're going to say, okay, we're going to put 60,000, I think it's 50,000 or 60,000, set aside, it's not touchable. And that way, when that happens, we'll have it.
No, I didn't hit everything, but there's a lot of, I know some of the answers to this. So a tech, transportation, roofing, all of that. We are sitting pretty solid. So you're very comfortable with spending.
We're very comfortable with the balance.
Well, especially for the fact that we are doing a remodel and doing things. Everything's getting updated. So we should be able to, the $57,000 sinking fund should be able to help us.
See, Roger, one of, one of the issues we got to in, let's say, 14 through 18 and maybe 19, even into 20, Pepple was, became a fix-it fund. Because we were actually having to use all of it to repair roofs, to replace mechanical stuff that was going on, which was- Our goal is, once we get the renovations done and everything updated and say, okay, now, we want to get things on a rotation where we can, where we're staying ahead rather than getting behind. Because, I mean, you would know with a roof, if you get ahead of it, you're-
And you're going to stay to make sure that happens, right?
Yes.
No, but I'm going to be part of the planning process. That's, we're going to actually meet next spring and sit down, schedule out.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That's what we need, isn't it? That's a fine line you'll walk though, because you don't necessarily want to sit on too much taxpayer.
Right.
So walk the line.
Greg, do you want to talk a little bit about, we, we had a building committee meeting, when was it, a week ago today, somewhere in there? On this particular item, the guard rail?
We, we're looking at the, the higher end, the higher end rail on that, the top of the fence. I think we've figured it out.
It's the circle, the red circle there.
There's two things circled and that's what it is.
We, we had, we had quite a little discussion about it.
This fence, right there. So it's going to be topped and will not have the, the top exposed spires.
Pointy things.
Is that the right word? I think so.
Pointy things.
It is a four-foot-high fence and it sits on an eight-foot drop-off retaining wall.
Forty-two inch, I believe.
Forty-two.
Yeah, that, sorry.
Close. I knew that. A 42-inch fence sits on the eight-foot drop retaining wall. It's a little more expensive because of the choices we made.
One of our concerns that we talked about is that there wasn't any other bids and it's over $50,000. And that's kind of a pattern for De novo. And, you know, we, we expressed that. You know, with, with the material or labor, you know, there's always the excuse, well, he's on site, but it still keeps people honest. We reluctantly, I think, agreed amongst the us that we'd go ahead and suggest its approval. But then later on, I got a call from, from Jade and she, she doesn't like the idea of doing this without getting competitive bids and she feels like we should send a message. She, she also talked, that she, mentioned that she had talked to you, Roger, a little bit about it. I don't know what your feelings are about it. So I guess, you know, we're going to lay this between all of you and see if you want to table it or see if, what your idea is.
This was definitely a concern that we both had as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I say, we, we move forward with it to this point, but that doesn't mean we're helping. But this is not something that will hold up the project if we say no, correct?
I did talk to Stephen and we can, we can put it out for bid, yes. I don't think it will hold up the project. I mean, it, it'll just-
The only issue would be is, is that's assuming that the construction fence is still there.
Yeah, we'll just have to leave the construction fence there.
Which I'm making the assumption it would be.
Yeah.
Technically, we wouldn't have to do that because that's a required fence by code.
No, but I mean, safety, safety wise, I guess we would just want it there.
Aye.
Yeah.
I understand.
During the school, during the start of the schools.
Yeah, that'd be the only bad thing. If they ended up, if they take that, the fence down and-
But I don't know why they would need to do that. I mean, we can definitely ask them.
You're kind of defeating that purpose.
We can go, we can go to-
What was the reasoning for not getting a second bid? I guess I'm just a little confused on that.
He just said usually-
Or three is the number, the magic number that you really want to shoot for.
What's that?
You really want three.
Three. He said usually that you go, you, you go with whoever's on site and you ask them if they want, if they have somebody that can do it. So that's just, so there really wasn't a reason.
Okay.
He just asked baiting if they had someone or had done this before and they-
I asked, and I'm thinking it was Josh that day. And I asked Josh because he's been, he's worked on these projects. And he, I said, so is this a reasonable amount? And he says, yeah, it's going to be right in the ballpark. That's, that was his comment.
I guess one question I would have is, is because baiting is already here, if we were to bring in a, a separate contractor to do the fence, would it cost them more just for the fact that they would have to come?
The mobilization.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that will be there.
Yeah. That, that was, that's often, that was the reason why you asked us here.
And this was, as I said, we, we discussed this too. If we go down the road of, we want three bids, there's a chance we get three bids and all three will come back higher than we are.
Right, right.
So there, that's, we've got a bird in the hand.
Yeah.
I can be swayed either way on it, really.
Yeah, yeah.
I just get a little sighted for the argument.
And I understand the funds are coming from outside the project.
Well, that's just it, because I go, if you guys, that was the other thing I was thinking is if you guys came to us and said, hey, we're going to, we, we approved our budget for this year and this is what we're going to do and we got our Pepple money and this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
We would.
We'd say, we want to see three bids.
Well, yeah.
Give you an example, when we buy used buses, we don't get 60 days to decide. We basically, the big guys don't say no after, because we get, we get two days to decide.
But when you're doing an, a, a item on the property and it's over 50 grand, you're going to get two bids.
Yes.
So as long as we're not via, I mean, we're not doing anything outside.
No, we looked at board policy and we don't, we-
That's furthering and it has to be done as a change order.
Okay.
You have to understand if it was $48,999, it would be, basically the decision could be made by management.
It's under 50.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not justifying, I'm just telling you.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
Right.
Got to ask you a product question.
Well, I'll, I'll give you an answer too.
Well, they'd be important. They stress that this is, doesn't have to be maintained. And they, they call this satin anodized ore standard architectural. It's under a paint finish. You know, anodized aluminum is just an electromagnetic treatment of the aluminum. So you don't have to paint it.
If, if I actually compare it to something that's in this room, well.
But that's a painted, that's a painted, that's-
Well, but that's, that's ironed. That, that has to be electronically, when they paint, if you paint these walls correctly, it has to be, the process, it's that-
Negatively charges the wall, you positively charge the paint.
But you're talking, you're talking-
Stick itself to it.
The, what do they call it? The paint loose on there.
Electro sty.
Electro-stick. No, no, but you're talking, what do they call it?
Powder coat. Powder coat.
Okay, what I'm saying, the process would be essentially the same process, so because.
But this is a little different, anodized is a little different process.
Yeah, well.
I mean, they've got all this literature here of all these seventeen to eighteen steps, but it's, it's, it's basically a paint finish. Anodized is not a, a finish, it's, it's, it's actually something you do.
It's a aluminum process.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what I was explaining to.
But I don't think it's a paint on it. Anyway, I, I, I'm a little confused on what product is, because normally anodized aluminum is, is not a painted product. And that's why when you said it was maintenance-free, I thought that would make sense, but I, I guess I don't understand what it's gonna look like exactly. They, they say here, painted finish, they say satin anodized ore standard architectural finish. Anyway, it's a little, I wish they'd be a little more specific on some of this stuff.
Yeah, I, I honestly.
But I've worked with anodized aluminum before, just like you see on commercial windows around them, they're anodized aluminum, they're black. And there's no paint on them.
Anodized aluminum is aluminum that has been treated to develop an exceptionally durable finish to create anodized aluminum. You use an electric chemical process where the metal is immersed in a series of tanks. Where in one of the tanks, the, and it, and not, anodic, sorry, layer is grown from the metal itself.
It's like commercial windows, you've seen them, there's no paint on those. And they, you can't chip them, that's integral with the whole thing. That's why I thought you said they'd be maintenance-free. But all this literature here is they have, you know, they're hot dipping it, what, twenty-one times? Even the powder coating, it, it's very durable, but I, I like the idea of being anodized. I just wonder if they, it's, it's just, I don't know, it just doesn't quite.
Gives it a surface for the paint to attach to that it's going to hold.
Yeah, it's, it's very durable and good, but I think the anodized is a better product. But I'm not sure what this is for sure. Anyway, that's, I was just trying to pin them down a little bit. What they get, you know, a lot of these architectural firms, they get these young people out of college and they don't themselves really understand. The contractors know better than us. But this is coming from a company that does this. Well, it's coming from Rasmus and Lumber. And you know, that's the other part of it, you know, there's, there's probably a hundred companies that do these types of things. Not that these aren't good, but. Anyway, I didn't want to take away from the discussion, if you want to, but I.
No, I think we should still release somewhere.
I say, I. I don't want to go through this every time we have a, a change order. As long as we can stay within bid, I mean, I don't want our budget to get out of control that this is gonna come from PEPOL.
And like I said, Brian, Brian and Mike were, and Jeff were involved and Mike especially on the type. Like, so this is not the, the low end by any means, because Mike said that, because then we're just gonna have to keep.
He was concerned about getting something that's gonna be durable.
Yeah.
And he could actually speak to this probably a lot better than I could, to be honest with you. You kind of rough with him.
It's two hundred and sixty-five feet of fence.
Well, I looked at it too, when you look at the cost per, per foot, I really didn't think it was that bad when you start looking at commercial grade. You know, when you look at the material alone, probably what, because I was just looking at pricing on, you know, some other type of fencing that really wasn't commercial grade that you can get, you know, that you could price out. You know, material alone on a lot of that was at least a hundred bucks and usually if you're gonna have it professionally installed, it's gonna be two hundred dollars. You know, and this was.
Two to five percent.
This was a. Yeah, what's that?
Two and a half to three thousand.
Yeah, so this is, this was like three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and I'm just kind of figuring the material was gonna be, you know, a hundred and eighty-five to two hundred and twelve. And if you look at that, the install was not twice of what the material cost was, so.
Sixteen thousand eight hundred was the install, materials were twenty-seven thousand. So that's the breakdown, but then they, there's a ten percent, where's it at, Roger, I just, sorry, I need to just say like that, but here we go.
So what do y'all think, you want to take a little straw poll and?
Contractors O, H, and P on some contractors.
What do you think, Jen, ten percent?
Over in Rock, ten percent.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm personally, I'm okay with this. Just because, yeah, if, if we go out and get more bids and if they're gonna be in line and these people are already here, you know, I'm, I'm good with this.
But if I weren't there with it, we probably wouldn't be looking at it now because we would have stopped.
Right. And I'm, I'm satisfied now that we've had the discussion.
But the, the point of, we, we want to see three bids. And we, we pushed that, that was in, in the meeting, we wanted to make sure that everyone understands in the future, we want to see. We're thoroughly done.
I think that's a good point with it too, is maybe to mention it to know, that we'd like to see that they get some.
But I think with it, if it's, if it's a small change order and they need to keep the project moving.
No, no.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, don't stop the project. Not for something small.
Cause there's gonna be change, there's gonna be additional change orders and we gotta keep the project moving. And if there's somebody there that can do it, we gotta continue through.
But those are your, your low-end management, this is lower dollars, sorry.
Yeah. Same thing.
My apologies, well.
We'll take that as a compliment.
Not you, I'm not apologizing to you.
But you know. She took it as a compliment, I guess.
So, yeah, that, that's what they.
And I guess, you know, we're just, I'm just asking questions, trying to do the job, you know, because I'm just.
No, we need to be transparent.
You know, we're doing tax, we're dealing with taxpayer dollars and things, but we also want to. Ethically to make sure everything looks right. I'm not here to micromanage, but I just trying to do my due diligence.
And function.
In situations.
Yeah.
And one of the reasons why Greg and I didn't, didn't ask for it to be tabled at the beginning is because of the safety issue, you know. The sooner it gets up, the less we have to worry about fences and some, something crazy.
It is very unusual to me that that is not a code.
Yes, especially with that big of a drop. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, it peaks and then it goes, you know, it gets down to like a three or four foot on the hill. If it was at the high school, I probably wouldn't be as concerned about it.
I'd probably get more concerned about it if it was at the high school.
Maybe, but down there, I just, it's more of a concern, in my opinion. Would someone like to make a motion then on this item six, approval of, no, item five. Approval of issuance, so this is fifty-two thousand five forty-nine, baiting change order number three.
So moved.
So moved by Jen. Second, second by Greg, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Okay, item number six, approval of issuance number one, initial abatement contract change order. This is the one I've tried to do three times, two, uh, ones ago. And this is twenty-six thousand two seventy-five, and I believe this is a final change order on that phase of the construction.
Do you remember how, how this one worked?
Yes, I do, I do.
This'll come out now, it'll come in some other time.
It'll come in another time, so.
It's just all timing.
Basically the mobilization.
And the, this, I, I don't mind saying, this abatement part of the project is some pieces of the puzzle, that's, some of the pieces are getting moved around.
And the bait, and, and honestly, the abatement is, you have to understand, we're not, they're, that's a whole different contractor. That's, Shire Batteries is actually our GC on that. And they're the ones that are handling all the negotiations and the lining up REW and our services and such. But essentially, this one's coming out now, it will magically come back in, pardon me, that's all it is.
Yeah, is, is this one an add for twenty-six, this or D-Da?
This is a D-Da.
A D-Da for twenty-six.
Now, and it'll be an add later.
Okay, okay.
They were supposed to go from the auditorium straight into the high school and we didn't get the bids needed at the high school. The timing, so they didn't, they had to.
Demobilize.
Demobilize and then come back.
Questions? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion for the approval of issuance one, initial abatement contract change orders.
Over the one oh.
Sorry. Get that? Roger and Greg, okay, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Okay, next we have item number seven, approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five consortium agreement with the Council of West Community School District. Over to you.
Uh, this is just basically, we have to sign it if we want to send any students next year to Children's Square or Heartland Therapeutic. Honestly, to be, it, it takes a lot to have to send them because it's very expensive, so we try not to. And the two that were there, we have one at Children's Square and one at Heartland are both back with us. So that's saving us a lot of money, but you just sign this to say yes, just in case. But honestly, we've had better service.
Unless we have somebody there.
Yeah, we aren't charged. And we have really good service with Boys Town of Omaha, so we've been sending kids there instead. And it's actually less expensive and it's better, so we do our best to send them there.
And if you've looked through the consortium agreement, but what is there, twenty schools listed on it?
All of the schools that they have kids from, sign it, yeah.
So we're all in this together.
We're all in this together. And the reason that it comes from Council of West Schools is just because both those schools reside in the Council of West School District. So if they happen to be here, we would be the ones doing all of this, because they have to do all the billing. And they can make some money off of it too.
And this is a yearly contract, so every year.
Yeah, annually we'll have to sign it, we've signed it, yeah. It didn't, used to be that way, Children's Square and Heartland used to be their own and then the state made them go do it as a, as a consortium.
Good, any other discussion? Look for the motion. Jen is nodding her head.
Yep.
So moved by Jen, and second by Roger, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, next we have item number eight, the approval of memorandum of understanding with Green Hills AEA for LETRS, whatever that is, training in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
It's not a typo. It's actually the science of reading, so I don't know if you've heard, lots of things with legislation, the science of reading is letters is, and we were ahead of the game, did it the first year last year, and this is just our second year to do it. It's, you, you pay by the person, so it's very, we're lucky right now that we get people in-house to do it. A lot of the teachers across the state, because it's mandated now, have to take it online and it's not the same. So we're getting a greater, a much better deal, so, and we'll be ahead of the game.
Very good, is this another annual one?
This one, actually, this will be the last time, I think, Jen, because eventually here, we will have our own trainers in-house, so then we'll do our own. Won't have to pay anybody.
Okay. Any discussion or could I have a motion for the approval of the move with Green Hills?
So moved.
So moved by Greg and seconded by Jen.
I should have extended the move.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next we have item number eight, I believe, is that right?
Nine, I think.
Nine, okay.
This is the agreement with Green Hills AEA for the management operations of a therapeutic classroom.
This is Rising Hope Academy, we've had this classroom in the intermediate building for this, it'll be our third year. We, the benefit of having this is we don't get charged monthly, just like we would send a kid to Children's Square or somewhere else. We get a free student, plus we don't have to transport them there, which is another cost. So they are in one of our classrooms, so we, we give up a classroom for them and then.
That's really all we give up is the space.
Yeah, just the space. We, we provide some support if they absolutely need it, but they, they provide, Green Hills, there's three staff members there. And, yeah, three staff members and six kids, six to seven kids, so it's, it's a little bit tougher kid. Yeah.
If you want to know monetarily, what, what a student amounts to, it's probably between fifty thousand and sixty thousand dollars.
So it's worth.
In that class.
It's worth the trade?
It's worth the trade, the classroom is worth.
Brian has to do.
Out of that classroom, the cost would, rough guess.
I mean, they're only really, on our end, they charge us, we turn it, we have to rebuild the districts, but that's.
Brian does the billing, so like with the Council of West, like I was explaining, they can do the billing. We, we do have to do the billing because it resides in our district. Green Hills can't do the billing, they used to be able to and that got changed too, but. Well, for example, Roger, we had a student that was attending Heartland Therapeutic, eleven thousand dollars a month. And transportation on top of that, so that child is no longer, once, and he came from a different district, so we didn't even have a choice to send him there.
Nearly double what.
Um, so once we've got the bill for that, I started fighting back. And he won't be there next year, because that's not, he doesn't need to be, so. He's actually gonna be in this, in our Rising Hope program, so we have an option for him.
Very decent, perfect. I want a motion for the agreement with Green Hills AEA for the management operation of therapeutic classroom.
So moved.
So moved by Jen and seconded by Roger, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next we have our item ten, the approval of the SU Insurance Company Equipment Maintenance Insurance with Jester Insurance Services.
This is Brian's baby, so what is.
Typically on insurance, we, we, it's just automatic, you, you know, you get your policy filled. This is something a little different. It's fairly widely used by a lot of districts. We have, I'm gonna say, shall we say, dabbled in it once before. And essentially, what, what we have on this one policy is, it will cover our copier maintenance, not supply. Well, yes, it does, copy maintenance, supply, they can copy like staples and stuff like that, the extra stuff, but it'll cover that. And we also are covering with going to Chromebooks, we are now going to be doing all the repairs on the Chromebooks in-house, which that gets covered, so essentially, we're able to bill this insurance company for that, to get paid back for that. We're also keeping.
Coolers.
The freeze, yes. Thank you, I was trying to memorize. Yeah, the locking coolers and freezers, and I believe that's it, Jenny, if I remember.
And then the printers and then, yeah, we're, we're just gonna start out, some scums, some school districts use, do it for all of their HVACs every thing. And then their maintenance, keep track, and then you keep track of the hours and the parts and different things, and then you turn that back in. And the advantage of it.
The real advantageous part of it is, is if you're doing stuff in-house, it actually, I don't want to use the word, it's a revenue generator, but you're able to bill at what you, if you were gonna farm that workout, you're able to bill out at those rates. You actually can get some back because of that. There is another, there is another advantage of it is, is what it does, we, you know, it's no secret, we have a spend deficit. It's no secret that that, we do everything we can to control that, but you also have to look at creative ways of making your general fund strong. Well, what it does essentially is transfer some of the risk from your general fund to your, to your management fund. So that's one of the, the big advantages of it. Jenny and I would tell you very clearly, we, we said, we're gonna pull on this, we're gonna do it. But if it doesn't look like it, it's gonna, you know, be productive financially, then we won't stay with it.
Yeah, because you wonder if you spent a hundred thousand dollars, if you just, that whole lot, you use it towards whatever you need to do.
So, so essentially, remember it's insurance. And, and they, the, they typically, your payback is gonna be eighty percent of it, okay? But the advantage is, is you're also, you're also transferring some of that risk from the one fund to the other. And you'll hear me say this till I blew in the face, anything you can do to help the general fund, general fund is the one we have to live on. And anything you could do to do that is the way to go. We, I, I'm not, I, I would say I'm kind of on, with this equipment breakdown, there are districts that put everything in it. And I'm probably not that sold, I, I think we probably went with the shoot fish in a barrel items, is what we did. We, we wanna, we, we don't wanna invest a hundred thousand dollars in an insurance policy and then fight up. Now, we're really only gonna cash out twenty thousand of that, that's then, you can cash eighty, it, it should, you know, that's, that should target, Roger.
Couple of questions I have is then, will you, before you renew next year perhaps?
We will.
Oh, yes, we will.
Oh, yeah.
Will you be able to tell us how much of that hundred three?
Sure.
Probably by the end of the year.
We can even give you like a mid-year.
They actually have to give us updates as we ask.
And usually when you have insurances, you're expecting to pay a premium for maybe some big ticket items, you know, just like the roof on your house, it might cost twenty thousand dollars and.
We pick specific items, is what we did.
Is there some big ticket items in here, you know, a computer, you think maybe is a thousand bucks or something?
So if you scroll back, the, the. Scroll back, the, the, the ones, uh, is there, let me just get the scheduled items. You can do it on here. The things you would, these would be, what I'm going to, I'm going to use it called fish in a barrel items. Your copy, they're going to be automatic. The, the computer's going to be automatic. The ones where you potentially can, can, end up.
Cost a lot of money.
Right there.
Yeah.
And that'd be a huge cost.
Yes.
If they went out.
And that's part of the reason we left those in.
Yeah, yeah.
We are, I would say, one of the very few districts that, that haven't used this. He's tried to talk, I mean, the, Nolan.
We played hard to get.
We did for a couple of years and then, but I would guess that about seventy percent of school districts in the state of Iowa use, use this, just so they can, the management.
You really have to have buy-in by your employees. You have to understand because.
They're going to have to keep track.
And Jeremy, who does tech part of it, which is really the, 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 Chromebooks and the copier part, he's all in. He's got his system already set up. So, and that's the person we really need to.
He did his research and went to two or three other districts that, that currently do it with Chromebooks, exactly what we're going to have. And they were like, oh, yeah, it's a no-brainer.
He's, the other thing, one more thing.
To fix them in-house anyway, so you might as well get credit for it.
Yeah, the one thing, the other thing with Jeremy is now we're going to Chromebooks.
Oh, no, they are true, yes, absolutely.
On, let's say our old computers, the ones that we're phasing out, they all have.
That's why it's worth it for the big risk.
Called an accidental damage. Part of their, part of their cost.
Make money, really.
Well, he can save on that end.
Not too much, but a little bit.
Not having to have that.
So they do insurance.
Way more pays for this.
Yeah, we don't want to have that.
I don't want to make sure.
Because it's a big risk.
Greg, just, just so you understand here, too, one, one other thing on this. On our, we'll call it the old computers, the ones that are being phased out, those all have an accidental damage policy attached to their original cost. By being, they'll remove that way more than pays for this.
Okay.
That's just talking on the computer.
The next thing about the.
Just the computers we had.
Yeah.
They were spending a hundred thousand dollars on accidental damage insurance.
Boy.
Close. We, we, we were.
Of the cost, of a, of a cost of a computer comparing accidental damage to not, don't quote me, but it's like five hundred to eight hundred and fifty dollars. It's so strict.
Three hundred dollars on each.
Hundred and fifty times.
One hundred.
So it just gives you an idea. And it, you're foolish not actually to put your copy machines in there. Because you're going to have that cost every month. It's, it's given. It's part of the contract, so.
What's y'all's feeling about it? Good, good to go?
Yep. And just understand, we, we.
One way or the other.
We made sure, we made it very clear to them that, you know, this is going to have to be productive for us, for us to continue. So we will definitely keep our, our hand, our eyes on it.
Looks like a good administrative.
Yeah.
Safety net.
Well, we'll look for a motion unless there's any other discussion for the approval of the S U Insurance Company Equipment Maintenance Insurance with Jester Insurance Services. Approximately a hundred and three thousand six hundred and seventy-one. Keep that Catherine. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next we have item number eleven, the approval of the Iowa School Finance Information System Membership.
So the next three are just our annual memberships. So ISFAS is the Iowa School Finance Information System. That's, I mean, they, they're amazing to us and help us financially with anything we need. Plus they create a, they have this massive spreadsheet that can help us do budget projections out for the next five years. So Travis, that we've worked with on the finance side for the bond issue, he, he's part of that as well. And Larry Siegel, that's, it's great to belong to them. The second one, the Iowa Association of School Boards is just, they send us the policies and do a lot of the work on stuff that we're already going to have to, we're going to have to approve anyway. And then the last one, that Rural School of Iowa Kids of Iowa, it's just, it's nice to have a group that's smaller and not the big, the big cities making all the decisions. So there's lobbying pieces and different things in that, too. And that's a small, pretty small fee.
Here we have a free lawyer.
We have a free lawyer at I S B. You're right. That's what I always tell you, Jim, we're going to call the free one first. Oh, yeah.
One of your favorite words.
We really aren't required to do.
Not lawyer.
The passports have always asked us to, to, I mean, passports have always asked us to put this on the.
Yeah, so if you don't, I mean, we just want to be transparent, but we don't have to if you don't want us to.
Well, can we just do a law order motion?
No.
Okay, motion for the approval, I S F I S.
I'll move the first one.
Second. Second by Greg.
Greg.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Next is the approval of the I A S B.
So moved.
So moved by Greg. Second by Roger. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next is the approval of the R S A I Membership.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Roger, second by Jen. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, we're up to fourteen here. We're moving along. Approval of the Resolution for Transfer of Funds for Athletic Equipment, and as I recall, we just got to do this every year.
It's an annual thing. I, I'm not aware of any school districts that don't do this, but basically what we do is anytime we, anytime we have an amount that comes in for use of our facilities, we earmark that, we set it aside, and then at the end of the year, then it gets transferred into help.
By thirty-six hundred dollars.
This is, this is less this year because, and it's, there's a pretty obvious reason why we had less rental facilities. Because we had an auditorium that was.
Not demo.
Yeah.
Yeah, demo. So, so it's less than it's been in the past, but hopefully that's going to tick again next year. It's ran, I think the, you know, if you host a lot of state events, it can be quite a bit. We've maybe had it up, even up in the, the ten, eleven thousands.
You host, you have football at State Base.
Or like basketball, we've had Underwood and Woodbine were here, we got in part of that gate.
But this is a requirement of.
We have, because we're taking it out of the general fund, which is where the funds have to come into, it's got to be transferred to the athletic fund. It has to be.
Yeah.
Otherwise we can't transfer.
Okay, could we have a, a motion for approval or unapproval of the Resolution for Transfer of Funds for Athletic Equipment?
So moved.
Well, second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next we move to item number fifteen on the next page, Policy Review Schedule, First Reading.
That's one of those good ones, yeah, because it's pretty narrow.
And we did take some out of these.
Yeah, yes, I did. Sorry.
About got even a little bit.
Yeah, that was something. And the, the ones we took out is interesting. What were they about?
They're the title line.
Yeah, discrimination, that type thing.
Yes.
Which is in litigation, which I thought was interesting.
We have the current policy and it sounds like there's some, like you said, some litigation going on. And so Shabon, our free lawyer, said maybe we should wait on these, on these until that's all been passed. So I just pulled them. So whoever was on policy got a kind of a, if they had one already, so I pulled this.
So they seem pretty straightforward about open enrollment and. School food program, any discussion or we'll look for a motion.
To.
Approved the Policy Review Schedule, First Reading.
So moved.
Greg?
Second.
Second by Roger. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next we have the Policy Review Schedule, Second Reading. Other concerns come up with, last month it was a first reading, of course.
I'm calling you.
Yeah, I don't think we had any discussion last. Well, we'll look for a motion to approve the Policy Review Schedule, Second Reading.
So moved.
So moved by Greg.
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next we have item number seventeen. And this is the Consent Agenda Minutes, which we have quite a few minutes there for the June seventeenth, June twentieth special. Six for the public meeting and six for the special. And then we have the accounts paid and all items here. Any questions on those?
An organized lady's fault then. I can't remember why that was again.
Because we thought we'd already signed it and Jim had to sign again.
Someone else.
One reminder on this, the financial reports, because it's the post-school year and this will be delayed till we get done with the post-school year end, which is probably going to be in September. I'm just making sure.
I, I did notice, I was going to comment that this is kind of an important one because this is the end of the school year, isn't it, in June?
June thirtieth.
And so, you know, these numbers on the percentage of budget are a hundred percent. It's hard to read it through the year because it's always a percent and that can vary from the budget and the money coming in and out, but this is.
I, I looked at everything and everything looks like there's nothing alarming that I saw.
I was, I see that like, what was I thinking here? There were a couple that were over a hundred percent. Is there, is there a problem if they were over or?
No, because it's probably coming out of, under someplace else.
Okay. I mean, totally we weren't over. I just know.
Yeah, if you could.
Oh, here you go. You want, you want these?
It's a P card.
Minutes. A P card is a prepared card. So like.
Debit card?
We call, yeah, we just call it a P card. So each building has one. If you're going to go to a conference or something, you take the P card with you.
Okay, so if, are you on the expenditure one?
Is it like a debit card?
The expenditure one like the credit card.
This is the revenue.
It's credit. And then we pay it each, and then we pay.
Honestly, when the revenue is older.
We don't have any credit on it. I mean, we have credit on it. We don't match on it, if that makes sense.
So revenue.
We pay them out.
And then you have the construction fund one. It's, if you're paying them all, is that just happens to where the time, it'll get all that at the beginning of the year?
Well, plus it also gives us the checks and balances.
So that one, no. Okay, so.
A little time in between.
The.
Because Greg went to the casino and had a debit card.
The actual, I think, if you're talking about this one right here, I would, the.
Would you be safe?
Operating fund. That actually, when we get down to our final figures, we'll be right in line. There's certain adjustment has to be made to.
Yeah.
Twenty dollars.
That's, that capital projects done, that's part of construction.
Yes.
Those were the.
Yeah, I, I thought.
The one in the.
I was, I was noticing like on the revenue summary report, operating fund, it says fund total eighteen million, a little over. Well, eighteen million, about three hundred thousand, and then year to date is eighteen million, eight hundred and seventy, so it's about five hundred thousand more. No, it says ninety-two percent of budget.
Yeah, it's probably going to fall pretty close.
So, so, but that's, that's okay to be a little bit less than the budget, I.
Well, you have to understand though, because that's.
Is it all the way through the?
No, I was just looking at the difference between the.
Like, okay, like for instance, on this one, you have year to date, but you only have May.
Oh, okay, so this is May, it's not, okay, so this isn't a hundred percent.
No, that, we, we can't really give you this one till September because we have.
That's my.
And we, we, I, I refuse to give you preliminary figures for year end because they, they change.
Yeah, I, I need to be corrected. I said this was through June, but it isn't through June.
It's only May.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that's what Brian was saying, will be a little bit later is because.
I would do, I would do everything in my power to have it for the September, for the minimum, I promise.
Questions, discussion? How about a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? That's a little easier to say.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Jen, seconded by Roger. Alls, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Oh, we don't have Jane here.
Yeah.
Maybe. We'd like to fill in for the item number F, adjournment.
I'll stand there.
Oh, great.
So moved.
So moved by Greg. All those, oh, second, better than second, Roger. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay.